Right. Twenty twenty four. Finding Commission. Pacing for Dickinson County. Part of the roll call. Mr. Fink here. Mr. Boltman here. Mr. Wilson here. Mr. Wolf here. Mr. Headstrong here. Mr. Schneider and Mr. Griffiths are out this evening. All right. Move on to the minutes. Anybody have any minutes to make to previous minutes? On. All right. First go up. Oh, sorry. I'll second. It's been proven second into per the minutes on our last meeting. All pros raise. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All pros same sign. Okay, we'll move on to new business. First up is CUP twenty four dash zero seven. Consideration for a conditional use permit to establish self-serve fuel station on a parcel land located in section five township sixteen range two generally located at the northwest corner of highway four and highway fifteen at the request of Jason Paul.
Commission, this is, the applicant is proposing a self-serve fueling station to be located at the intersection of K four and K fifteen highways in Elmo. The site contains a dilapidated residential structure which the applicant intends to remove. I don't know if they probably removed it already. Per article fourteen, fueling stations do require a site plan for review. However, the surveyor that the applicant just contracted was said that due to his work schedule, he may not have the site plan completed. And as of today, he did not have that site plan completed today. So the applicant has provided, however, a concept illustration that I've included with your packets on the site to give you the commission an idea of what he is proposing. But it's also included a project scope and plan on a letter that I included in your packet as well. The proposed use would be extremely beneficial to the southern part of Dickinson County as there are few fueling options in that part of the county. The applicant has agreed to abide by all K dot requirements for the entrances and any KDHE requirements for environmental safety. This parcel would be too small for a residential use or any use requiring a well and septic, and the applicant has no intent of establishing a retail store at this site. Based on the review criteria, the use is consistent with the intent and purposes of the regulations for promotion of economic development and managed growth of development. The area is predominantly farmland with some vacant town lots with few residential uses in the vicinity. The use does not appear to place an undue burden on existing infrastructure. The applicant will need to receive approval from K dot for the proposed entrances on K fifteen and K four. And my understanding is that the applicant is working with K dot and has been contacting and communication with them. No significant changes have occurred in this area. The property has remained as a residential lot for a number of years. The property is suitable for the proposed use due to the size and separation from adjacent uses. The proposed use would further enhance the implementation of the economic development goals of the comprehensive plan by allowing establishment of a diverse rural-based commercial retail fueling use. The proposed facility may not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area as long as the applicant abides by all state and federal regulations. No public comments were included on this particular proposal. Environmental Services has no concern over this proposal. No other agencies have indicated concern either. So the staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Prior to building permit being issued for the site, applicant must provide correspondence indicating coordination with both K dot and KDHE for approval. Advocate must meet all state and federal requirements for safety and environmental compliance. Commission options would be to recommend approval with the above referenced conditions. Recommend approval with any additional conditions as deemed necessary or table for further information of site details that the applicant has included with the packet are inadequate. Or recommend denial, the commission would need irrefutable evidence to use to be an appropriate for this location to make that decision. So with that, I believe the applicant is here. With on. Want to step up and address the commission?
Property to clean it up. And it's really too small for a residential use, so. I've seen this many other places where they've done this and it's just simple pumps with underground tanks and. It'll be kind of handy for the area, yes. Twenty-five miles of fuel really. We just thought it would be a good thing for the area. Any other questions?
Going to handle. Gas and diesel?
You're thinking gas, diesel, private fuel. So if you're a farm owner, whatever. Be kind of handy.
You've already removed the structure of the.
The structure. Talking about some kind of permit in place or we're trying to get a permit out with them and.
Over KDHE also.
I talked to them and the fire, I guess the fire marshal is probably the biggest one.
Yeah.
With all the basically having a survey, which they did today, they're working on today. You have to have the correct setback and the fire marshal from the tank placement and all that. So, you know, whenever they have that done, we get the permits and everything taken care of, you know. Develop a car plan and want to place everything. The plan you guys have is just an idea of what we want to do. I mean, it's just, it gives you a good idea.
Do you think you have all those other pieces in place? Approvals? Plan? For all that?
Yeah, that's what basically my plan is. I want to get approval before I spend more money getting more stuff done. I guess if that makes sense, if something else happens and you can't do it, then it's not intentional. Extra for nothing. You know, I guess to me like, it's kind of like a sequence of events leading to get the county permit and first conditional use permit. Like to me, we need to get our entrance permits from the state changing use. And then after that, then just your KDHE fire permit. I've talked to them. I'm, I haven't, she sent me the, from Topeka, sent me some information on it. I just haven't, I haven't applied for it yet because everything sounded all right. I didn't want to go down that hole with nothing else worked out first.
And then we, if we would approve this application, it would be a conditions.
Right.
But you had to.
Permit. Right.
Tell us the conditions.
Right, you would have to, I would issue a building permit to start construction until all that was made.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Well, you have to, you have to. I'm open. Does staff have any questions for Jason? Any more? Okay. Thank you, Jason. All right, we're going to open it up to the public to see before anybody gets up. Let me read this. The public is invited to speak to the board during the public hearing portion of any item under discussion. Please raise your hand after being recognized, give your name and address to proceed with your questions and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents his case, the planning commission may ask questions of the applicant. The board will discuss those answers. After the board rests, the chair will invite comments for interested persons for or against or neutral. The board will conduct discussion and take action if possible. Citizens are asked to limit your remarks. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. Due to the timeframe, please limit your remarks to clear and concise statements. The chairman may have to put a limit on the number of speakers. The board will attempt to be fair, flexible, and to ensure all those that are interested are heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision proposals will go from this board to the county commissioners with recommendation of approval for the night. All issues heard at this, excuse me, all issues heard this evening will go to the county commission after the fourteenth day appeal period applicable. Should you be interested in attending that meeting, please contact the zoning administration or county clerk for the scheduled hearing dating time. If you wish to file a protest petition, please contact the zoning administration for the forms needed. The zoning administration will explain the petition process. Thank you for coming, everybody, it's appreciated. Anybody has anything to say about Jason's project? You may step forward.
Yeah, I can make a motion. I'm going to approve conditions used CUP twenty four dash zero seven. With the two conditions. Two motion conditions.
Second. It's been proven seconded that we approve CUP. CUP twenty four dash zero seven. Twenty four dash zero seven. Under the, under the record, under the records conditions that we're providing the staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All pros same sign. Motion passed. Who's that? I didn't hit one. Okay. I thought I saw Jason, yes. Okay. All right, we'll move on to our second CUP. The CUP twenty four dash zero eight. Consideration of a conditional use permit to establish a wholesale lumber mill on a parcel land in northwest quarter of section nineteen township eleven range three generally located in thirteen forty-six thirty-four hundred avenue at the request of Danny Formtrager. I said that wrong, I'm very sorry.
Okay. The applicant is requesting consideration of approval of a one hundred foot by sixty foot structure for operating a sawmill. Sawmill to process whole logs into rough cut lumber to be basically shipped on the wholesale market, available to the wholesale market. Applicant has submitted a scaled site plan indicating a thirty, thirty-one foot wide entrance on Key Road with a twelve foot interior driveline. The sawmill shed will contain two doorways, a door at the area designated on the plan for log stables. And the one loading dock position is a back end for loading cut lumber. Trucks carrying logs will enter from Key Road and turn north on the middle branch leg of the driveway as indicated on the plan. This would be to unload the logs by the log stable area. The truck would then turn west toward the west branch leg of the driveway and then head north around to the east branch and then back off the main driveway out. Trucks picking up processed lumber would enter from Key Road, then take the west branch leg of the driveway north and around to the loading dock on the northeast corner of the building. Drive extension next to the loading dock would allow trucks to back into the facility to make loading easier and then pull out of the loading dock and drive south along the east branch leg of the driveway to the drive leading out. Staff does not anticipate a large amount of traffic from the general public. This would all be just general truck traffic as it's associated with this use. Rock is in the process of being installed along Key Road and I can verify that there is rock along Key Road. And there were some questions about the maintenance and all that. And I have been given by the township, it is a township road, and I did include a correspondence from the township where it says, basically, this is confirming our conversation about Danny's Key Road and thirty-four hundred township entrance. The board has okayed the road for rock and for the sawmill. And they have also approved the entrance. The entrance does not require a culvert. And so it's at grade, so it's, there's no issue there, it's a thirty-one foot wide. The review criteria, the use is consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations for promotion of economic development and managed growth. This area is predominantly farmland with few residential uses in the vicinity. Therefore, this location is compatible with neighboring uses providing conditions are abided by. Commission has approved similar uses with identical land use patterns as recently as January of this year. The use does not appear to place an undue burden on existing infrastructure. Driveway entrance is at grade and does not require a culvert. Township has confirmed an agreement to provide rock on Key Road heading north to thirty-four hundred avenue. Truck traffic is anticipated to travel north. The significant, no significant land use changes have occurred in this area. This property has remained in cropland a number of years. Property is suitable for the proposed use due to the size and separation from adjacent uses. The proposed use would further enhance the implementation of the economic development goals of the comprehensive plan by allowing establishment of diverse rural-based occupations and commercial wholesale uses. The proposed facility may not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area as explained in the items listed above. Staff has received concerns over the direction of trucks leaving the facility and the potential of them heading south. Comments from other departments and agencies, as I said, Sherman Township has provided written consent in the form of an email that the township board has no issues with the entrance. All the property is level and does not need a culvert. The applicant has entered into an agreement with the township for road maintenance. Rock has already started being laid on Key Road. So with that, what I will do is, you have basically three options, three options, which are you can recommend with the conditions that I have outlined. The only condition that I have outlined on this project is that they maintain that agreement with the township for road maintenance. And that's, that would be the only condition that staff is placing on it, that you can, let's say you can either recommend approval with that condition or you can recommend approval with additional conditions as well. You can table for detailed explanation of traffic flow or you can recommend denial. So with that, I will, if you have any questions for the applicant, the applicant's are here. And one of you would like to represent whoever wants to Danny if you're, if you're willing to talk. So if you can stand up to the podium there and just kind of set me straight if I'm wrong about something or.
I think it was pretty much my, maybe, pre-dawn plan. I could put in a sawmill, like you said, wholesale lumber. All but mostly, maybe for lower grade logs and calibre material. And it's a lot of time, but we come from a very far maybe back of a sawmill. Of course, the plan might be a little different. I mean, we have to kind of see how everything works out from here. That's the plan.
You also stated, and I sit out to the sites, and you verified that it would actually be, you said that it would be slightly larger than the twelve foot width.
Yeah, it would be, the driver would be wider than by the thunder, it would be wider. Or like maybe fifty or twenty feet.
You have a question now?
Yeah.
On your map here, you have designated here in the yellow lines. So how big, how big is your site there? Acres?
It's approximately.
It's a hundred and forty-nine acres.
That's the small area.
The small area that you're looking at is probably about five to five.
Right. I have a question about the correspondence from the township. Verified Tim that there is rock being.
Yes.
On the road.
Yeah.
So who's putting the rock on the road now? Is it you or the township? Okay. And the agreement with the township is?
They would maintain it, I believe. I don't know the details of it, but Danny, can you?
Who's yours?
And then you've been.
Agreement. And as they, they contact us if it needs to have more. And that was on the agreement.
Okay.
That's for a length for a distance of placard?
I don't know.
Fly off from. Just to the following corner?
Yeah.
So is that normally just a more dirt or not very well gravel road? That's why there was a concern?
Yeah, the, the, there were two concerns. One was that the fact that it was initially a dirt road, that portion of it was dirt and they converted it over to gravel, they're starting to gravel it. And the other concern was the bridge that's in that vicinity that they would be going and accessing trucks would. And that's maintained by the county. I wanted to say that Roden Bridge Department, Martin Tannahill, did get in touch with me as well. I forgot to mention, it said that that bridge is suitable for truck traffic.
So will the road be placard so the truck traffic is required to go in one direction?
You can make that request and you can recommend that that be done.
I approve. Road south there, you're coming off of thirty-four hundred, correct?
Right.
I approve going south. Is there another bridge down in control or is that a low water bridge or where are we at there?
Well, from what I've seen, it's, it's just another, I think that whatever bridges are there, the low water bridges, but it's that they're, they're adequate enough. Or just regular traffic, not truck traffic. The way these guys are going to go, I think it's, the route is sufficient to help, to help avoid that area that's dirt.
Other sawmill, we did some additional work January eighteenth of this year.
Yes.
In your experience, is there anything else that we need to be thinking about as we begin to have multiple?
I think that the only thing, the only real concern, I think that was, that I see, they're pretty straightforward. The only concern from the previous one was the location of the culvert was inadequate. Had to be relocated and there was confusion on the township board about, you know, one person said, oh, it's okay. The other person said, no, it's not. And so that's where the initial confusion came for that. And so I would say that just before any, anything like this gets done, like this one is, is pretty straightforward. Since it's at grade, the entrance is in grade, they've already introduced their appropriate agreements with the township. These types of uses are pretty, they're, they're going to be pretty straightforward. As long as we make sure that when it comes to a culvert or an entrance, that we just take it. Needs a culvert, they said that we have to make sure that they, they abide by what needs to be done. The township clarifies what they need.
So we'll have letters from the township and the counties to that effect, yes? Tim? I got a question to you. I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. On the background of finding number two, it says that sawmill will process whole logs into rough cut lumber to be shipped to the wholesale market. Now, this, this may be a question for you too. Are you guys getting whole log shipped to this sawmill? Okay, you're not cutting trees down in our, in the area, right?
Okay.
Okay.
No.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Okay.
My question. Questions from staff? Yeah. Thank you, Ian. I'll open it up to the public. Any questions from the public? Seeing as there's no questions from the public, there are motion that would like to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve CUP twenty four dash zero eight for the purpose of establishing a wholesale lumber mill. The locations identified on the application and per the staff's recommendation with an addition on that we placard the road that the trucks have to exit that long through thirty-four hundred.
Okay. Second. It is moving second that we approve CUP twenty four dash zero eight with staff recommendations along with placard traffic signs for the trucks entering and exiting the area. Favor, please raise your right hand. All pros. James got his. I have.
Same.
Yes, sure. All pros same sign. Motion passed, CUP twenty four dash zero eight is approved. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, move on to our last.
You guys have a P? And you?
CUP twenty four dash zero nine. Consideration of a conditional use permit to expand operations of a refinery in southwest, southwest quarter of section one township thirteen south range four. He generally located at the northeast corner of twenty-four hundred avenue and Vane Road at the request of David Walker and James and Ray McLaughlin.
Okay. This is. This is, is to give you some background on this particular site. Back in 2020, Mr. Walker met with staff to discuss his future intentions to expand an existing mining operation in the southwest quarter of section one, for which there appears no history of a conditional use permit being issued at that location. Staff verbally instructed Mr. Walker that a conditional use permit would be required unless he could provide proof the area he was proposing for a quarry was already approved. He indicated he had no such record, and staff did not find any such record either. When asked what his timeline was to begin, he did not know. And as he was, at that time, managing operations in other county, but probably in the 2021, 2022 timeframe. 2020 was the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, as we all remember, and the state had established industries that were considered essential, and mining was included within that list. Staff was also instructed to limit public gatherings to the extent it was statutorily feasible. Because of both the pandemic and the uncertainty of the applicant's timeline, staff issued an administrative approval to remove dirt and only quarry within the sections, which have already been previously disturbed. Any further expansion closer than 1,000 feet from the south property line would require a conditional use permit. On October 21st of this year, staff sent a staff work notice to James McLaughlin, the owner of the parcel in question. When we received a complaint from an adjoining property owner indicating that Mr. Walker's operation was indeed active. Because the temporary approval issued by staff expired once the state's pandemic guidelines were lifted, Mr. Walker did consult with staff on the conditional use permit process and completed the application. However, there has been no reclamation plan or bonding specific to this parcel that has ever been submitted. Submitted material regarding impact on the wells is 30 years old, and that information is in this document here that I provided for you that's in the spiral. The public comments, staff has received comments from property owners adjacent to the proposed quarry expansion expressing concerns over the impact of water quality service as well as land value impacts. Comments from other departments, environmental services with regard to area wells, the current setback from quarries is at least 50 feet. County appraiser, the presence of quarries within proximity of residential use does not necessarily affect the residential value, only the value of the land of quarries located, as it is mostly classified as waste, and it becomes, as it becomes devalued. A decline in residential value is likely due to macro trends in the market. Review criteria, I'm gonna go through these. Okay. Under the review criteria, would approval of the conditional use be contingent, or consistent, excuse me, with the intent and purpose of these regulations as outlined in section 1-102? In general, consideration of this proposal, and specifically any conditions placed upon it, reflect consideration of the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens of Dickinson County? Is the location of this proposed use compatible with other land uses within the surrounding neighborhood? While quarries have been approved in the past with similar adjacent land use patterns, due to the proximity of adjacent residential uses, there may be environmental concerns regarding water quality as a result of issues. Noised and aesthetic impacts may also be an issue, but may be reasonably mitigated with the conditions proposed. Will the proposed, proposal place undue burden on existing transportation and service facilities in the area? The applicant is proposing truck traffic on interior private access roads only. However, if any use of public roads would require a, a, an agreement from the Roden Bridge Department or the township, whoever is. The. Bond in the amount necessary to reclaim all lands open to any given, at, at, open at any given time shall be placed in effect and submitted to the governing body prior to the operation of all quarries. I am, for some reason, my. The important view missing. Yeah, yeah. I don't know where that came from, okay, let me, if you all can hold on for just a minute, let me see if I can get that printed up. I apologize, for some reason, my printer did not do what I wanted it to do. So, let's briefly.
Yes.
Okay, item D, I think I've covered, will the proposal place undue burden on existing transportation? The access road is only, however, if any use of public roads would require a road maintenance agreement, part of the operation is proposed to be conducted within proximity of high tension lines, which the applicant has indicated that he has been approved to combine in the easement. However, no proof has been submitted. Impact on wells in the area immediately adjacent to the subject parcel may also be a concern. Item D, is the proposed use made necessary or desirable because of changes or changing conditions in the area affected? Well, due to an increase in demand for rock for both state highway projects and regional road maintenance, there is currently a limited number of vendors providing construction with great rock. The item E, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped. The property has traditionally been used for agricultural purposes, however, there have been similar quarrying operations within this area over the past 50 years. The applicant has had a lease on this parcel since the 1970s. Is the applicant's property suitable for this use? Subject parcel is over 300 acres, area, and that as long as the applicant maintains the proposed setback, staff anticipates no issues with encroachment of our adjacent land uses. The, is the proposed use in conformance with and further enhance the implementation of the comp plan? The economic element of the comprehensive plan, I would say although quarrying mining operations are not specifically addressed within the goals of the comprehensive plan, the 2020 census does include mining, mining in the same group of primary industries as agriculture, therefore quarrying, while more intensive of a use than agriculture must be considered as also contributing to the economic benefits of the county. Land use element, the reclamation plan requires quarries and mines is in conformance conservation goals of the comprehensive plan. However, none has been submitted to staff at this point. But in consideration of this application, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the hardship imposed by the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property? State of Kansas and Dickinson County consider property rights to be a priority in reviewing land use cases. Commission must consider that quarrying has been taking place in this area of the county for several years, but also mindful of adjacent residential uses. Since environmental impacts are addressed as elements of county character, under the preservation goals of the comprehensive plan, the commission may consider these rendering conditions placed on this case. Whether the proposed conditional use, if it complies with all of the conditions upon which the approval is made, contingent will not adversely affect the property and the area effect. The conditions of approval as outlined address those environmental and physical concerns which are most commonly associated with quarry operations. The commission may recommend additional conditions as deemed necessary to protect the environmental conditions of the surrounding area. Listed below, I have regulations that particularly address CUPs for quarries. Under Article 21, item 50, the following conditions are required. Item A, all quarries and mining operations and asphalt and concrete plants shall be screened by a method approved by the governing body when the same are visible from public road. The applicant shall provide an approvable method for dust abatement on all uncaved interior roads if any part of the operation is located within a quarter mile of a residential dwelling. Their applicable maintenance agreement between the applicant and the county and/or township having jurisdiction shall be required to maintain the roads that provide the ingress degress to the operation. All areas quarried or mined shall not endanger the lateral support of abutting or adjoining properties. The minimum setback of 100 horizontal feet from any road right of way, 30 horizontal feet from other property line measured on the surface must be maintained, free of any quarrying or mining activity, either surface or subsurface. The setback areas may be used for the erection of bams or other screening features required by the conditional use permit. A plan for reclamation of the site shall be prepared and submitted to be part of the application. Plan shall indicate a timetable for the reclamation to be, to the proposed use of the site, a general plan. There's a stage, okay, yeah, I got it. A bond in the amount necessary to reclaim all lands open at any given time shall be placed in effect and submitted to the governing body prior to the operation of all quarries, mining or removal of sand, gravel, coal, and topsoil authorized by the conditional use permit. All areas quarried or mined shall not endanger the lateral support of abutting or adjoining properties. Minimum setback, as I stated, was a horizontal, 100 horizontal feet from any road right of way, 30 from the other. Staff, building equipment, quarry products, or other materials shall be directed or stored within 100 feet of any property or right of way line. Copy of the annual survey of mining operations is required to be filed by the state law. With the state, shall also be filed with the governing body. Said annual survey applies only to underground mining activities. Staff is not really offering a recommendation at this time due to, we've had a previous kind of enforcement issues, not with this applicant necessarily, but with other quarries in the area in the past, and this is going back 30 years, 20 years. And there's really not enough information to provide you in terms of providing you a, a recommendation one way or the other. I, I can't, you know, the, the records that we have are kind of sparse on that. So the options for the commission this evening would be to either recommend approval with the following conditions. The applicant must cease all operations with the exception of low impact overburden removal for the purpose of complying with screening requirements until the following document, documentation has been submitted. Updated reclamation plan for all parcels the applicant is currently utilizing. Repurposed plans from other sites won't be accepted. Updated well impact study or proof from a licensed third party engineer paid for by the applicant that no local residential wells will be affected either in terms of quality of water or service issues by the operations of the specific site. Dust abatement plan, since this project is within a quarter mile of a residential structure. Current proof of compliance with state of Kansas environmental statutory guidelines. Site plan for this location prepared by a licensed surveyor to indicate depth and distance of operation from adjacent properties as well as utility easement locations, grading and drainage plan. A USGS quadrangle map will not be accepted as a site plan. A bond in an amount acceptable to the county for reclamation. Item two, applicant is proposing a radius of 1,000 feet extending from the residential property to the south. Staff recommends the applicant maintain a distance of 1,000 feet on a line parallel if there's a row of trees to the north of the residential structure that's located on the subject parcel, extending the width of the parcel. Commission may require the applicant to enter into an agreement with adjacent property owners for periodic well testing and submit their results to the county for our records. Applicant may use the existing overburden to construct firms to provide buffering in conformance with screening requirements outlined above. Conformance with all provisions required for quarries outlined in Article 21, item 50 must be invited by, if public right of ways to be utilized, applicant can enter into a maintenance agreement with either the county or the township. Other option would be recommended denial because precedent with regard to quarries has been set in this immediate vicinity for a number of years. The commission would need some irrefutable proof that the use is inappropriate in this area. The other option is to table for further information. The commission may table for additional site plan or operational details specific to this parcel that the board feels have not been addressed, I submitted. So a lot of the information is in this document. So I know you, I haven't had a chance to look through every bit of it. So what I would do is just, the applicant is here, you want to hear from the applicant. And then the public here and then decide what you want to do.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Yes. That was quite a scenario. Pass out here for addition to the little booklet that I gave you to get your booklets. This is a matrix of the Kansas aggregate, aggregate regulation. It covers all of the federal, state and local regulations, regulatory bodies that we are applied, we either have to apply their rules or we have to get a permit from. Also have some facts about the industry in Kansas that can read later. I think we'll go into maybe this period, but it gives you some facts about the industry. First of all, I'd like to give you just a little bit of history on this site. In 1969, I started building the plant that was either, well, it's been there for over 50 years. In 1970, we started production and had our first job at Fort Riley to build the highway up to Custer Hill on the west side of Fort Riley. The, some of the locations that we've used in the last 50 years are in that booklet. There's a map that is a short map, a center map of this map. This is all of the areas that we've quarried since 1970 and reclaimed. And the area that was in your little booklet that I was inquiring about is one little piece of this, those up here. This is about four and a half miles wide and three miles deep. Okay, we've been there since 1970, which 54 years, 55 years. I was involved in it for the first 30 years directly involved. And I sold, I sold the business to Martin Marietta in 19, in 2001. And at that point, I thought I was finished with quarrying. And in four years, I came back and said, hey, we're going to get out of small markets. Would you buy this back? So 10 cents on the dollar, sure, I'll buy it back. Anyway, that's, that's how I got back into it. At that point in time, I was contracted with fire construction, who's in the aggregate business, to operate the quarry. And I basically had the lease and the ownership of some of the land and some of the equipment. But you can see that we have covered quite an area in this part of the county. And I think if you look at a aerial photo of this area, of the whole area, you won't hardly be able to tell where we've been. We've reclaimed, I don't know how many hundred acres. And some of it back to farmland, some of it back to pasture. Pretty much whatever the farmer that we leased from wanted to put it back to if it was possible. So if you look at an aerial photo, you can't hardly tell where we've been. Only, the only thing you can see is our roads and the area, the active quarry and the plant site. I was, I was trying to refer to some of these pages in this, in the booklet. I hope you all have a chance to look at it. And how many, how many of you have, have been out to the site? That's unfortunate because this, this particular farm was leased in 1973 from Harry McLaughlin. And we started quarrying it right closely shortly after it was leased. We started down by the river coming back on the few hill sides or the hill that comes back to the south. And I leased Harry McLaughlin's property and we went right into that. Well, to jump ahead a little bit, I hadn't been in the, in the details of the business since I sold to Martin Marietta because everything was, was pretty well set up before that. And when I inquired to Mr. Hamilton about the status of this quarter section, he said, we, we don't have any records on it. He said, you should have your records. Well, my records went to Raleigh, North Carolina when I sold my business, I didn't get them back. So I depended on the county to have the records of whether or not there was a conditional use permit on this land. But I realize now that in 1975, when these regulations came in place, I was already quarried that site. And in fact, Jim McLaughlin built a house right on the north end of an 80 that we quarried. And, and the whole thing is reclaimed, you can't even tell it was a quarry before. As, as well as the hill to the east of it. And we quarried a little bit back to the east, which if you look at your, your book, it shows that particular farm and the areas on it that were, were quarried and the areas that were still reserved. Got pictures in here, reclamation, pictures of, of and on the back of the map, it shows where they, where those pictures are from. In this, in this booklet, I've got the quarrying license for fire construction. I've got the blasting, the ATF license from, from, for blasting from fire construction. Since they're doing the work, they're the ones that, that have to keep the permits up. Also in here, I have a table of distances which shows you how much powder you can put in a shot or in a delay, how much powder per delay that you can use at the distance from any structure that you can use that amount of powder on. And I've also included too, a shot card from 1996, which shows a much higher density of powder than what we're using now. We would, we would have called that a blast in 1996. Today I call it a bump because we have a lot heavier equipment that can dig the, the rock out. We use a three yard hydraulic excavator that sits on top of the edge. And when we bump it, it just loosens it up just enough that the hydraulic excavator can dig it, put it in the truck. And so I asked Jim, Jim's house is like 200 feet from the edge of the quarry where we started quarrying. And I asked him if, if he could feel the shots. And he said, well, I was standing out there one time watching it. He said, I couldn't hardly tell it go off, but I, I kind of heard it thud, you know? So that's, that's the kind of explosives that we're using now. We don't, we don't have to, besides not doing much vibration, it also costs a lot less to do it that way. And then cost, of course, are almost everything is more. Also included in this little booklet is, is a reclamation plan. And it probably wasn't record, written plan, but it shows five foot intervals on, on this property going to the south. And then showing the 1,000 foot setback that I voluntarily did because I didn't want to cause any issues with the landlord there. And I met with her and told her that I was trying to make this as, as non, not effective on her as I could. There's been five different landowners, five different people live in that house since we started quarrying there 50 years ago. I might, Steve. I guess I could give you just a little history about, why this came about. As I said, I went, I came in to see Mr. Hamilton to see if there'd been any changes in, in the period when Martin Marietta owned it. And of course, he didn't have any records. And so I assumed that we were going to be good to go with our, with our grandfather laws because we had started quarrying in the early 70s. I think in this, in this booklet, you can see that the letter from the governor says, don't have meetings. Then also there's an exceptional that provides for the maintenance of critical infrastructure, which includes production and distribution of commercial construction aggregates or materials. So basically we were exempted from those COVID requirements. And after talking to Mr. Hamilton, he agreed and sent me this email that said that we may expand our operation into section one indicated in the reserve area of the lease. And that, that was in this map that's right back behind in this section showing the McLaughlin lease from the McLaughlin farm. And you can see which parts of it have been quarried, which parts of it are still considered reserved. Says that no conditional use permit will be needed for the expansion, providing, provided proof of the lease agreement is submitted. An affidavit and memorized statement from James McLaughlin indicating the lease, it's been leased since the 70s, would suffice if you are able to acquire, if you're not able to acquire the original. So the next page is Jim McLaughlin's affidavit. He bought this property from his father. He knew at the time, and he could speak. And we talked about it and we have changed our, our royalty agreement. And royalty meant that, that we paid from the time that we leased it from his father until we leased it from him now. And so I updated that lease in 19, in 2012. At this original point in time, there was nothing said about having to have a conditional use, a hearing for a conditional use. As you can see, this email is pretty, pretty specific about what it says. It says, no conditional use permit will be needed for the expansion provided that proof is given, and I gave them the proof. And the main reason we didn't have any, any proof of a conditional use permit prior to that was because we started quarrying it before there was even any zoning regulations in the, in the county. But I, I'm still surprised though that there isn't any, any record of the conditional uses until 20 years later. It, it just blows my mind. I mean, usually you would depend on your government agency to keep track of the things that they do. Well, in this case, the the other point I'd like to make is that, you know, if, if material production was important, important enough during COVID to be excluded, then why isn't material production? to be excluded, then why isn't material production now important? This is probably the only site in Dickinson County that, that produces concrete rock of the quality that, that can be used in, in the state and federal projects. I'd kind of like to go through these, uh, issues that were outlined, uh, by Mr. Hamilton. Um, first thing, I, I don't, I don't understand why we got 314 acres because as far as I'm concerned, this application was for 160 acres. But that being said, I, you know, doesn't mean it.
That's the parent parcel. Right? That's the parent parcel, 314 acres. You don't indicate that there's a split there. It may be 100 and some odd acres that you're requesting, but the entire parcel is 314.
On, on some of it's already been quarried?
Yep.
Okay. Well, let's just go, let's go down through there. The number one, we met with the staff and, and talked about, uh, we wanted to extend our quarry and not, not to expand it, we wanted to extend it. And, uh, in southwest quarter of section one, it says there's no history of a conditional use being permitted or being issued. That's because we started quarrying it before there was any conditional use. Uh, the staff or Mr. Hamilton verbally gave us a conditional use permit. Dave, sorry?
I'm over here, Chairman. We've kind of gone through this already.
You what?
We've gone through this already.
I know, with a lot of the trial.
I realize that. I realize that. But don't try to make points on it. Don't reread everything. Cause we've heard this already. We're trying to keep the meeting going. We don't want to beat your three hour. Not saying your issue is not important, cause it is important, but we don't want to hear the same thing over again. I appreciate it.
I would like to hear Dave's feedback because personally I have some, some questions about the staff recommendations for approval. Um, there's some things in there, uh, that, as an example, updated reclamation plan for all parcels the applicant is currently utilizing. I don't see how that's applicable to this, to this, uh, session that we're in. All of his app, all of his parcels, I don't know how many you have, Dave, but I don't know why we would be interested in updating his reclamation plans for all parcels that the applicant is currently utilizing. I don't see the validity of that. So, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't mind hearing Dave's feedback on these recommendations. I personally have some questions about it too.
That's, that's fair.
I believe it can be summarized.
Yes, I completely agree with you, James. And that's, that's what I was trying to get at, Dave. I'm not trying to tell you not to do what you're doing. I'm just saying, don't, don't reread what we've just gone through. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
My purpose was to correct the misstatements.
Okay.
In, in the.
I'm sorry if I was.
It's a review.
That's my fault. That's my fault.
we're back to number two. Uh, he, he said he had no records and, uh, and he, he said, I said, I provided no records and he had no records. So to me that goes back to the grandfather clause that I, that I'm promoting here. on the, on this paragraph six, it says, because of the pandemic and uncertainty of the applicant's timetable, uh, staff issued act and let free to remove dirt and only quarry within the sections that have already previously been disturbed. Any future expansion closer than 1,000 feet from the south property line would require a conditional use permit. I don't even know what that means. I mean, if, if I was after a conditional use permit to quarry, what, what was this?
May I interject? May I interject with this term? The, uh, you're speaking about grandfather. There is no grandfathering once the, the county adopts zoning regulations. So any grandfathering that you're saying that you have, anytime you, you break ground in an area that you may be leasing and you may have had leased for 50 years, anytime you break ground on there and you've not break, broken ground on that section before, I've seen the aerials, we haven't broken ground on it, that requires a conditional use permit now.
What you're, what you're seeing is reclaimed ground. Ground that has already been quarried and reclaimed. So you're looking at aerial photos.
So you're saying that this, uh, this, what you showed me, this aerial photograph where you've got the, where, where you're saying you're going south of that, uh, south of that easement for the electric, the electric lines that are there?
What about it?
You're saying that's reclaimed?
No, I'm saying north of it.
That's where you're, that you're saying that, and, and the approval that I gave you.
We're talking about this whole farm. We're talking about the whole lease. The whole lease was, is several quarter sections.
Okay. The conditional use permit is for this section here that you're, you're, you're breaking, you want to break ground on last year.
And I'm saying that it's part of the original lease, which was opened in the early seventies, which grandfathered.
It's not grandfathered in. Grandfathering goes away once you start changing.
I, I'll just leave that in. You'll have to go to court to find that one out. Anyway. It's important that, that there's a lot of demand for state highway rock. Everybody knows that. Um, been in operation for 50 years. I think we know how to quarry. I think we know how to reclaim. You, you look, you look at over the area and when you look at the aerial photo, you can already tell where it's been quarried. Um, I'll try to hurry this along a little bit. Um, in, in the list of regulate, regulations that particularly address the CUP's quarries, it, uh, in the very first A, it says for mining operations, asphalt, concrete plants. Uh, it also says coal mines and dirt, selling dirt. I don't understand why all of those businesses are in one, one portion of the, uh, zoning regulations. There, there's nothing like, I've been in all over the coal mining and there's nothing like. Okay. Um, quarter mile dust from quarter mile and I, I talked to, uh, the neighbor that was doing the complaining and asked her if she lived on a, on a, uh, rock road, county road and if she had any dust. Of course she did. But I understand this and we do have a plan. We, we use a water truck to water the quarry roads. Okay. Let's go to the setback area. A hundred feet is way too much to be setbacks from any kind of public road. Uh, the state has a requirement that you're setback, two feet for every one foot down that you go. And, and that's statewide. So if you're, if you're going to go down 10 feet, you've got to come back 20 feet from a, from a right away or a property line. That, that's the way the state runs all over the states like that. Uh, I mean, a hundred feet is just, it's, uh, just a number that somebody threw out there. Obviously most of these things were not, were not, uh, written by somebody that's been in the business.
Dave, can I follow you a minute?
Yeah.
On that, on that point, Tim, where did that 100 feet come from? Cause I wondered the same thing. I thought you were.
That's quoted straight from our zoning regulations and, uh, under, uh, part of 21, uh, under quarries. But I would like to also, I've included, uh, state statute 49 dash 501 in, uh, as well in your packets. And we've included, uh, limits on excavation. And, uh, I think it was based on, on that, uh, 49 501, um, requirement. Uh, and basically what it states is, uh, from and after the effective date of this act, land which is located outside the limits of any incorporated city and which is not zoned or is zoned for agricultural use shall not be excavated for limestone mining or quarry purposes unless there is for each foot of depth excavated at least one foot of unexcavated land between the excavation and the property line, uh, of the, of the person who owns the land being excavated. So I think a lot, what, that's a minimum. And I think what our zoning regulations, when they were adopted, uh, because of the intensity of the use, the, uh, the, the concern was that the quarries would be located, you know, close to adjacent uses that might be impacted. And so there was an additional 100 feet that was, you know, now you have the authority as the planning commission. If you want to vary that, uh, requirement, uh, that's fine, but it's a, uh, that's the way it's written currently in our zoning regulations.
I'm, I'm heard actually questions. Okay. The height, the, uh, paragraph, uh, is it's, uh, page three, it says, uh, it's, the applicant indicated that these has approval for the mine within the easement of the airline, but no proof has been submitted or allowed. I have proof here. Um, anybody wants to read it? If I can read, read the.
Is that proof from your record?
Yes, just a great quarry underneath the, uh, electric lines. It says, it says that, uh, the plan that we presented is acceptable to everybody. There's several pages of it, but it has been approved. Um, reclamation plan shall be submitted. And they're saying I didn't submit a reclamation. And, uh, thank you for looking at the little booklet. I have a reclamation plan in there that shows a five foot interval, five foot interval in reclaiming the land back up to the, the, uh, 1,000 foot setback that we, that we, uh, voluntarily.
So I have a question on all of that you're stating that you have submitted. Um, did you submit it with your application?
Yes, it's, it's right there. It's on, it's in one of the, the maps that I.
And it was stated, this is my, I mean, I just want to make sure because.
So, uh,
I've heard this multiple times. Is it in the manner in which it has both been, um, presented, requested by staff?
It's in the application, yeah.
I'm asking, I don't see the, we don't see the application. So, and this was given to us tonight.
Yeah.
We had, because you know, time to look at it and to sit down.
The booklet, the booklet contains the application.
I've, I've gone through this, but you know how hard it is to understand the complaint and to know which is the reclamation? Um, I'm just asking to see if it was.
It, it is, I have a great plan. I have, uh,
But to me, it doesn't say here, reclamation. That's my point.
Well, if you would, if you'd have been out there, you would have seen that we were doing some reclamation already.
Okay. Well, I'll wire you that, but yes, thank you.
Yeah. Well, we plan to reclaim.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
All right. And, and, you know, changing the, changing a plan in reclamation is not an unusual thing. It, it sometimes it depends on how the farmer or the landlord wants to leave it. We might say we were going to do it this way and the landlord might say, well, I'd, I'd rather have a pond there or I'd rather have something else there that's, that wasn't in the plan. And they have to redo the plan every time you, somebody changes their mind. And as long as it's reclaimed, I think that's the, the base of, of this regulation. Um, and as far as the, as far as the bond is concerned, the state requires a bond. And the state comes out and inspects every reclaim property. Either approves it or you do something additional to it to, uh, acceptable to the state. But there is a bond that goes along with every application of, of a quarry that the state has. And, and the state, the state, uh, monitors that and they, they administer it.
I'm going to apologize again, please. Because if someone apologizes you one more time, because Tim, I, again, I, I had a question on that item, the bond item, item F that Dave's referring to. A bond in the amount acceptable to the county for reclamation.
Again, that's in our zoning regulations that was adopted back in 2008.
To me, that's, that's vague. That's open ended. And if it's defined by the state, then I would, and, and maybe it's as easy as when we go through this to just, uh, strike all of these things or, or strike certain ones that are from our, um, rules and regs and just refer them to state rules and regs or refer them, refer to, um, these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27 agencies. Maybe we just refer to these on anything that we have questions about. Maybe we strike those items that are, that are, uh, uncomfortable here and just, is, is that something we can do?
All I got.
You're, you've got, you've got your own township board. Does that make sense?
Well, I think the bottom line is, is, is those are by the state. You can be greater, but you can't be lesser than the state.
Correct.
So if the state says it's a hundred feet, you can make it 200 feet. If it's not something you just thought of, it's in the regulation.
Right.
It can't be less than 100 because the state said it's got to be 100.
But I agree. But how do we, how do we approve something if it's open ended? Again, a bond in the amount acceptable to the county. What's the county goes, you know what? We'd like to have an $85 million bond on this. Then there's nothing that Dave can do about it. Where is conditional use permit? And I'm, I'm exaggerating here, but the ambiguity in this and the, the, the things that don't line up is, if I was a business owner, I would, I would wonder, you know, where I'm going to be if, if it gets approved this way.
It would take estimating what it would take to take whatever the balance of, let's say there's a, that reclamation stops. Then there would have to be someone to estimate what that, the remaining reclamation would cost in terms of, you know, someone doing that and then put the bond in that amount. So that's why it's written the way it is because, uh, you know, it, it varies. You know, I mean, you could have somebody that says, okay, I'm going to come. I'm not necessarily saying Mr. Walker would do this, but I'm just saying though, you may have a quarry where they'll only reclaim half of it. And then suddenly it changes ownership. The other, the new owner doesn't know about it, doesn't know about having to reclaim it or, or doesn't follow through with, uh, finishing the reclamation. At that point, the county would have to, you know, take it over if they so chose. And that's where the bonding comes in. You would have to have someone come in and assess. Uh, and, and, uh, I, you know, I, the only thing I can think of is, is, uh, offhand would be, uh, our county engineer would probably have to figure that out.
Well, if you think directly to what you're talking about, in order for a new operator to quarry, he's got to get a. he's got to get a license from the state. And part of that license is, is the reclamation bond. And so it, it's covered either way. Let's, let's go on, uh.
Quick, quick, so if you were to have the engineer go out, could we rewrite the, what Dave said about that? Instead of being so vague, we go off of the basis of what the engineer.
The county engineer.
The county engineer decides that it's work.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to rewrite your regulations. I'm just trying to point out things that really don't work or, 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 or different than we're usually used to in operating this business. But again, the hundred-foot setback, thirty-foot minimum, all that, that's just a repeat of what we had before. We have to, we have to submit a, a mining, uh, well, that, that photograph. Okay, let's. Yes, let's get to the screening issue. Uh, I have a big problem with screening. Uh, we're out, we're out in the middle of nowhere. And you've got maybe twenty cars a day going by this quarry. What is the purpose of screening? Because it changes, that quarry moves. And if, if we put a berm there, then we got to use the berm to reclaim. Then there's no screening. What's the purpose of screening in a quarry?
You have adjacent land uses that you have to be mindful of. That means residential. That means you have to have, in our regulations, it states that you have to have some sort of screening between adjacent uses. And specifically for quarries, that could be a berm, it could be a tree row, it could be anything. But there has to be some sort of screening. That's why that's in there.
So I could, I could use round bales?
It would be whatever, what, whatever is acceptable to the county, to this board and the county commissioner. Is screening in and of that word defined in height? And it says, it's basically, it refers to landscaping or historically, it says you can use berms as well.
I'm just thinking about, I went to Rocket Ham and, and quarry. I can see them rocking off a long ways away. Can't imagine it's bothering anybody to drive, drive by that quarry down there.
Well, and it's possible that, that, when they're talking about screening from there.
I, I buy a rock and, oh, here, Kansas Falls, too. I have a problem.
My boat. When you say screening from, like, it says screening from the road, it may be one of those that as a result of, uh, we've had situations where KDOT, if it's a ceded route, then they would have screening and that sort of thing. And so I think that's what this is kind of a reflection of that as well, even though it doesn't mention KDOT roads. It's just that there's, it's common to have quarries along uh, routes that, you know, because the state requires you to have, like, if you have a junkyard, salvage yard, have to have it screened. So, so we could modify that screening regulation for this case? You can, okay, thanks.
Well, I mean, I can understand it with a, you had a junkyard or had something that was going to be there permanently. I can understand that. This quarry's moved. So you can see from my map, we've moved four miles wide and three miles deep, over fifty years.
I've got a question. Down through all of this. Dave has been quarrying in Dickinson County for quite a number of years. Okay, but he's not the only quarry operations that we have in Dickinson County. So with that said, I'm asking, are we getting all of this from the other quarry operations? And I don't like.
Here's, here's, here's the, the situation with quarries. And this is state-wide. I've talked to other counties as well that have run into the same situation a lot of times. Because of the nature of quarries, the only time that you have a quarry actually uh, go through the, the process of, you'll have some that go through the process of approval, but then they get forgotten about. Okay, because either they get reclaimed or they get abandoned and then staff changes and then they don't know, you know, that they have a bond or whatever. They don't know what the conditions were that were from the, this is like, uh, and the reason is because it is a prime, is what I had explained in my staff report. It's a primary use, it's like agriculture. So there's this tendency to, to, on the part of back of people's minds to, to sometimes either neglect or not look at making sure that these provisions for quarries are met. It's not, you know, I mean, this is something that's across the state. There are some counties that I've spoken to that have a lot more stringent requirements of, that are in our zoning regs. But it's, and then there are others that are like in, in more rural counties than ours that don't, you know, they have regulations, but they don't enforce them because they just don't have the staff or the staff doesn't know how to, still about maintaining it or they don't have a professional staff on hand. Uh, I don't, I, I can tell you historically from, uh, I've been, I've done my, some research on, one of my predecessors from way back in the early two thousands was running into a situation similar to, you know, where she couldn't find information uh, on a specific case for, and specifically a Walker's case. And this was way back in two thousand six. And so, uh, but I don't know, uh, a good answer for that. I mean, it's, it, there are, there, there may very well be quarries that are here that I can tell you that, that probably don't and that we would, and the only time that we would require that from them is if they did what Mr. Walker's is proposing, which is, is this, you know, checking the status of it and saying, what's going on? And it's a, and everyone say, oops, you need a conditional use permit for this. And so there's, there's, a lot of times, it's, it's no different than like, let's say, when we run into a, a commercial use, like somebody wants to, uh, put a retail or sell something in the county that requires a conditional use permit. And we don't find out about it until somebody wants to, like, build an addition or something like that, they come in to give them. It's, it's the same situation with quarries. There's a lot of stuff that goes on in the county commercially and industrially that we don't, we're not aware of or we don't find out about until they actually come in and want to pull up the building insurance or something.
Well, you'd have a hard time putting a quarry in, in a city. So agriculture, country is the place that you have to have quarries. And so with a, with a township road that probably doesn't have twenty cars a day on it, I don't understand the reason to have to screen. Now, if, if Ms. Edwards wants, wants me to put a screen up there by her house so she can't see us, I'd be willing to do that. I've offered, I've offered to have a seismic, seismicologist look at her basement, be sure that, that we don't hurt it. I've offered to have a hydrologist look at her well. The study that's in this book was over a ten-year period and there wasn't any detriment, detriment. Something bad happened to one of the wells. And the, the summary said that he was, the hydrologist was more concerned about these wells being in a pit getting water in them from the, from the outside and contaminating than he was with the quarry. As you can see in the, in the, in that one study, it shows a rock column where, where quarrying the rock is the Tuana Rock up here and the, the water, uh, aquifers are the Fort Riley and the Tuana and the Florence Flynn, which is way below the Tuana. So, uh, you know, I think we've already, already covered this water part of it. And like I, I offered her, I'll have it tested. We'll, we'll monitor it. Same way with, with the seismologists. We, we will do it. And, and, uh, just to reassure that, that we're not causing damage. And, and if, if she wants some, uh, round bales in front of her house, you know, I mean, along the side of the road, I'll be happy to put up ten-foot of round bales, you know, if that's bothering her. Testabeh, you know, we have a testabeh plan with MSHA. MSHA requires all of these relations that, that's Mine Safety and Health Administration, which is part of, of OSHA, not OSHA.
It's a federal.
Uh, it's part of, it's part of OSHA, Mine Safety and Health. And then EPA, water and other things that we use. So, I mean, we get, we get plenty of oversight. I don't even know what a current proof of compliance with the State of Kansas environmental statutory guidelines. I don't know what that is.
KDHE. Need to find out if, if there's anything. If, if you don't need anything from KDHE, then let the state tell us that we don't need anything.
You report anything to KDHE?
That's water quality.
Quality?
Yeah.
It's already covered, water quality.
And I would need proof of that if this ever gets approved.
Please, on what?
Do you have any wells that are in compliance?
Proof of compliance. But what, what, what does that matter if there's no wells out there? I mean, I, I understand the neighboring wells. If there's no wells at quarry, and what is there to approve?
McLaughlin is two hundred feet from the edge of the quarry. We've already moved away from him. He has a well, he says it's the best quality he's ever had. And there was no issues at all with his water two hundred feet away. So you've had his well tested?
Yes. I've, since we've lived, we've had it tested twice and both come out. And the explosions, uh, aren't any worse than Fort Riley. If they're charged on, I can't remember. Fort Riley's, it's pretty soft.
And again, I want to go back to, why, why is it not good enough to tell these guys the same thing to tell everybody else? Even the, even the wind project that came up. He said they had to abide by, you know, EPA, the KDHE, they just need to abide by those rules. That, that was in our conditional use program.
Right.
But why is that not sufficient here? Why are we requesting that he provide, and that he, I, I don't know. But my understanding is you're asking him to call up KDHE, say, come out and see if you find anything wrong. If you don't, then let me know. And I want a letter stating that. That's, that's my sense of it. What I'm saying is, he is saying he is already in compliance. Okay. So that means he's receiving a letter from KDHE saying that he's in compliance all he has to do is.
But not on this property though.
That's the whole point.
All right, well, let's go on here.
But until they begin the quarry, what would KDHE come and approve?
They have been quarrying it for months, for months. They haven't, any kind of, any kind of, uh, uh, proper application or any kind of thing. They've been given an order to stop and they just continue to come out there every day and disturb the, the soil. You're dealing with somebody that doesn't follow the rules.
Are they disturbing the soil in my?
Okay, well, ready?
Good public.
Yeah.
Well, let's take, let Dave finish.
The thousand-foot from any residential property, I don't think that's any regulation.
That's correct.
And I voluntarily put that thousand foot in when you asked me to.
Right, that was my, my, that was my requirement. So we went through this process. And I will explain that to the board here when you get finished.
I, I, I kind of disagree with the Edwards because I have an email here that says that I do not need a conditional use permit to quarry that property.
You also received a letter from me on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four that basically said, and I'll quote, "Per our conversation on November twenty-sixth, the temporary administrative approval previously issued by my office during the COVID-nineteen pandemic for the property owned by McLaughlin has expired since the state has lifted restrictions on public gatherings. Therefore, any work being proposed for the quarry at that site is considered an expansion of the use previously approved. It must be postponed until a final decision on the submitted application that you submitted has been made by the county. Although your lease on the land has been enforced since the seventies, you would only have been approved for the section that you were, were requesting approval for quarrying at that time. You, you are currently restricted to dirt work only on the McLaughlin property. Any, any mining of rock must be delayed until the final decision by the county commission, which is scheduled for January."
I think what you see, what you've seen out there is reclamation and strict. I don't think we've pressed off of that property since that, that notice came out. In fact, I, I disagree with you about the temporary, uh.
Because you didn't know, you were not clear with me in twenty twenty when you were going to start working on that. And so that's.
I told you, I, we were working in Erie County.
Right.
And that we were coming back to Dickinson County and I was just wanting to be sure that we were okay, everything was good, to start quarrying in that quarter section.
You, you were saying you were in Erie County. I'll agree. But you did, you, you told me between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two time frame was when you were going to start back up. Well, the, the pandemic is over and it was, the state lifted that restriction. So we have to abide now by that. That's, that's why I say that was an administrative approval that I gave you to work on the area that we had already done up there.
Well, I don't know. I think I can read pretty good, but this says no conditional use permit will be needed for the expansion.
Not, not for the, that area that you were already in up there north of that section.
I think we're going to have an issue over that. But anyway, let's get on with it. Coming in, part of one page left. Where I told you that I don't agree with the screening issue. Unless you want me to screen the president. The recommended denial part of it says that it need to be some irrefutable proof that this isn't an applicable use to the area. Okay, let's go back to the complaint that, I, I, when I went and visited Ms. Edwards, uh, I asked her what her issues were. And she said she's afraid of that we were going to crack her foundation with our blasting and that we would ruin her well and we would devalue her property. Those are the issues that she mentioned to me. And I told her that we would monitor the, the seismic monitor. We have seismic monitors that we use other places. And we would monitor her well. And I, I gave her a copy of this whole book. So she knew exactly what we were, what we were bringing here to them and, and what we were going to be asking for. And, and I think. And and I think if you really look through this book, you'll find that that wells have never been a problem because they're in a different rock strata. In fact, they're quite a quite a ways down from the Toondalas that were quarried. In fact, there's a rock column in this that shows where where we're quarried and where the water is. So I mean, it's pretty simple. Uh and having a ten year study, I think, even though Mr. Hamilton thinks that it's thirty years old, you know, these rocks are thirty million years old. And how often have do they change, you know? Uh you might if you have a if you have an earthquake or a volcano some massive earth movement, you might get some change in your water in your water tables. But this water table has been the same for uh probably as long as anybody's lived out here. Um. I think that's as much irritation as I can handle. Um, I I think I'd like to call on my attorney, who has who has represented me before in these in these types of hearings and have him give you a couple of ideas of what he thinks as far as this application is concerned.
My name is Keith Anoram from Deception City. I've been practicing law there for a long time and had represented Dave Walker in various entities over time. Um, when I first looked at this, which was only a couple of weeks ago, the thing that struck me was there were no limitations in the May two thousand twenty authorization to proceed. You can argue however you want, that the that the governor's order wanted and it stopped something else, but it didn't. And your letter doesn't do that. As far as I'm concerned, uh Mr. Walker's operating under that authority. There's no time limitation, there's no conditions. Frankly, I've been involved when it's when the stop court order came out, I've thrown into it in the world. I want to take support, take support because there's no basis. That's the main thing that we need to look at. Over time, Mr. Walker has, through his various entities, not only complied within state, federal, and local regulations, he's gone above and beyond, for example, reclamation. He made the effort to go talk to the complaining party here about how to take care of their complaints because everybody's offering to you and apparently that's not good. My point is, as counsel for Walker, Mr. Walker, is that he has more than complied with the regulations. The application he made, I think he got sucked into it frankly. He wouldn't have made the application, again, if I'd been representing him at that time. But I think he proceeded without that. As gentleman as he is and the experience he has, he's referring to the time being operating, refusing to operate, stopping the operation, excuse me, because of the stop court order. At this point, he hasn't talked about this, he's losing business, a lot of business. He has contracts that you cannot comply with. And people contracting, you know, have to go to other vendors and they're going to end up with breach contract claims against Mr. Walker. It's not. So take that into consideration as well. Everything else that Mr. Walker talked to that, I'm not going to cover again because we had a long meeting, I'm sure you're tired. But those are the points that I would make. There was no limitation placed on the authority to operate when he got it from Mr. Hamilton in May two thousand twenty. Whatever month. Later, on his own, he presented that. It's referring to a temporary authorization. You can find the words temporary in there, that's fine, I can find. So there's no basis at this point, frankly, to do anything except to prove the conditions, the application condition used for a minute with the regulations with which he has to comply, state, federal, and local. Go from there, then go on about his business. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
You stated that when he got the stop word order for his attorney, you you said ignore it. He doesn't have to do it.
I said, had I been representing him at that time, I hadn't been contacted about this matter at that time.
Oh, great.
What I would have what I would have done would have been contacting Mr. Hamilton and said, you know, what the heck? You got no basis for it. And had he not given me a basis for it, my advice might have been to Mr. Walker is just to ignore it, continue to work. If they want to take him to court, take him to court. And that's awfully confrontational and Mr. Walker is not that way. He may not have followed my advice. But that would have been an option. Thank you.
Well, um, my name is Mark Edlund and I'm a student of the law in that practice of Deception City. And I just think it's kind of interesting because I've heard a member of the board said that they just apparently didn't know that they even had the full application until denied. And your own regulations require you, when you have these meetings and it's you've printed it and it says unless you have an application that's on file by November twelfth of twenty twenty four, that the meeting has to be postponed until January. And those are your own rules that you have. And this uh application was made on the twenty, November twenty second and it was supposed to be filed by November twelfth.
Can I clarify that for you? We never see the full application. We don't see necessarily everything.
And I just think if they have.
If it goes in. But we never necessarily see every piece of it.
I I bring the application with me.
Yes.
If you want to see it.
And I I just think I like all the stuff that's been said tonight and the fact that we're like that.
This is a very odd meeting.
To have a chance to review the whole thing that we tabled everything until the January meeting because that's when it should have been in.
A clarification.
If anybody wants to see it.
A clarification for the board. The time for the deadline for applications is that is set by staff as those are subjective because there are some, there's that's an ideal date that I would like to receive something uh to receive an application by before so I can have time to look it over, make sure it's complete. And I'm usually flexible on that date, so it's if they bring it a little bit later or whatever, I said, that's fine. It's just that's a general rule of thumb that I give for days before I send it to the uh public, you know, for public notice. If someone, you know, it gives me time to make sure that it's uh that there's no additional materials that are, you did it technically. But so if anybody wants to bring it a little bit later, I said, I'm I'm flexible with that as long as it's a complete application. A complete application is the application form, the fee paid, and all the submittals that you have there.
And in response to that, I just say that it says right here on the application that incomplete application cannot be accepted. And then it says here that application deadline due is November the twelfth. And this is dated and submitted on November the twenty second.
And they they don't.
This meeting cannot be held handled on December the December the nineteenth.
They're not the ones that think that I do.
Well, that caveat isn't on your website. And that's what's on your website.
That's an ideal date when I would like to receive something, but.
So uh and so I would suggest that, you know, that the mode meeting be on this particular application at least be continued for another month uh so we can actually have a chance to answer some of these questions. Because I know and we'll we'll work on getting the support. There there are neighboring people, there are neighbors that have had problems with their water and have been ongoing and have their problem. And I think we should have a chance to downwind all these various things that they've brought. I think this is a real important issue.
So the the landowner that was giving you the complaints, do we have anything in writing from that person? All we hear is that we agreed, we didn't agree. And the reason I'm bringing that up, we've we've had a lot of flack, just like the township roads that the earlier one denied. If there was an agreement with the township and they're okay with it. And then it all blows up and he said, she said, or the letter that says, I want, I want this and Mr. Walker has given me this. We don't have anything.
That's that's more of a civil issue. That would not be something that this board would really be concerned with or as would the township, you would.
Well, but then here, and one of them was talking about testing the wells.
Well, that's that's the thing, that's something that I wanted. That's a condition that I put on there for you guys to look at. Uh, how enforceable that is, I don't know, because that is, you know, basically a civil thing. And I basically, a lot of times I'll put a condition on that is, it might not be enforceable, but it's on the record. And then that way, if it, you know, if like, let's say someone is aggrieved by the use, they can say, okay, well, the county commissioner, planning commission said acknowledges that there was an issue with, say, water or something like that and give them the the ability to do it. So there's there's certain things like that one in particular. I admitted that one I added, I don't know how enforceable it is because it is a civil issue uh between two property owners, but it's a way of basically getting it on the record that, you know, water is, that's my way of saying this is an issue in that area. So if, you know, you can remove that if you want, if you feel it's too. But I just wanted to clarify that. Because I I I thought of that after you had mentioned it.
This application is is a lot of material to digest when it's handed to the to the board tonight.
Yeah.
I, you know.
And I I think about like the quarry, it's historically, it's already been reclaimed. It's on the east side of Paint Road, south of the river. Um, that was a half section or more, wasn't wasn't Mr. Walker, I don't believe, but it was. Uh, but they didn't, they didn't strip that entire half section and then start. They did it in pieces. They did, you know, an eighty or a couple hundred, I mean, hundred acres, whatever made sense, they did that, reclaimed it, went to the next piece, did that, reclaimed it, went. And eventually they worked through that whole half section. I I guess I'm just too stupid to understand, but why is this any different than that? Why, I mean, walkers have had the leases for how many decades, five decades, whatever. They've had, they're they're quarrying right next to us. They're not going to be ingressing or egressing off any public roads. They they're they're trying to work with the neighbors, try to do the best they can with, you know, hay bale screens, testing the well, checking the basement. I I'm just struggling to see why this is different than, you know, the quarry that I mentioned before, the stand by Woodbine. The size of that quarry, they didn't go in on day one and strip all of the overburden off. They're doing it in sections. They're do they, you know, they strip a section, they they quarry it, they they reclaim it and strip the next section and quarry it. And I'm I'm just wondering if if Dave hadn't come in and said, hey, are we good to go? I mean, no good deed goes unpunished. Um, would would we even be having this conversation?
Well, it's in our regulations as a conditional use permit, that's why it's in front of you. I mean, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I'm just saying that's that's what it is.
Well, then are we going to go to the quarry at Woodbine and the next time they strip the top soil overburdened off? Or we're going to say, no, you got to stop?
If they go into another section that, you know.
Define section, it's not another section of ground, six hundred and forty acres. It's a quarter within that.
That's what I mean, a quarter within that section. That's why this is here, that's why this is the southwest quarter that he's going into in the same section of ground.
This is like, you're got it. You know, that's like, there's a lot of issues here that I think we can ferret out. If now I have a chance to have that whole application look over and maybe we all make a better decision next month.
I was trying to say something. The where they're digging now is I own a half section there. They're digging in the south quarter. The north quarter of that half section has been quarried and reclaimed and it's back in natural grass, in native grass. Mostly that. And they are reclaiming as they move across. The they have to have a bond with a bunch of money lined up to reclaim ground in case they skip town. It's doesn't have to be that much because they're claiming reclaiming right behind themselves.
This is one of those situations where you were mentioning, James, about the different conditions and things that are in the the regulations currently. This is something that we can look at uh because we're still updating those old regulations from two thousand eight. This might be something to kind of look at and address uh as this type of use to see if we can adjust those or make them more specific or to get rid of things that these things just don't apply. But, you know, as far as right now, this is what's what's in there. And so, I mean, you can you can do a, you can, I think, recommend a variance from certain things. Uh, but, you know, technically, it's, I don't think you can really uh at this point say, okay, well, we're not going to abide by this. It's in the regulations, it's in the regulations and not much. Only the county commission may be able to do that. But you can you can make a recommendation to the county commission. Let's say, uh, say, okay, I'm going to, instead of the the two hundred foot setback or whatever, make it or something like that, I don't know. I mean, it's just you all are the ones that make the recommendations and they'll end up with, but this is something that we'll have to talk about when we uh next, probably early part of next year, when we start, you know, getting back into updating the different sections of the regulations. This might be one that we can address.
Can I ask a question? Um, as a citizen with no dog in the spite. Um, so we heard the quarry started nineteen sixty nine, nineteen seventy, right? Dickinson County regulations started nineteen seventy five, correct?
That's correct.
So what was the process in nineteen seventy five when those regulations were enacted for the first time in this county?
They would, they would have gone through the Board of Zoning Appeals. They have, uh, there was no, at that time, uh, these types of cases, conditional use permits were heard through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the planning commission back then only heard rezonings because that's went back when the county had zoning, actual commercial and industrial and residential. And they got rid of that process way back in two thousand eight.
So.
So now this group, this body, here is conditional use permits.
Do I understand correctly, the reason we're here is because no documentation records could be found from the nineteen seventy?
It's 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 not that, it's anytime someone, I want to say anytime someone disturbs ground, uh, it's it's not grandfathered in. It's it's grandfathered until somebody breaks ground on a new section.
It'd be section as in six hundred and forty acres or?
A new a new quarter section.
A new quarter.
Quarter section. Yeah, so if and that and that's, I keep saying section, when I say section, I mean quarter section.
Mr. Hamilton, has the submission that Betsy has made with regard from the state highway?
Yes, I I.
Has that been pardoned, infirmished ever by?
Yeah, I've I've furnished, that's what I was going to tell you.
Well, it's a boy, we don't get anything either.
I I I got, I've, they've been provided with, I think, the first six pages from the state. Most recent correspondence and I'm emailing them the rest of that at the one and I said, I just, I didn't have time to print everything off in time for the pages. And so.
Before you do this, there there's no mining license currently under Walker Stone Company or David Walker or the Walker Stone Company or the Crest Quarry Software. They don't even have a mining license in there, Stefan, I can't.
But why would they? They're just going to the next section within that lease of the existing property. Why would you apply for a new license if you, like Jim said, like, I mean, we all know that's how that's how quarrying works. I mean, why would they do that? Why wouldn't they get a new letter from KDHE?
Mr. Headstrom, I'll be happy to give you an answer to that next month when we have a meeting for you continuing. Because there's a lot of data in here that about violations and reports that I think you should make yourself acquainted with.
So we had a meeting, we had several meetings over this fall on a wind energy project. And this board was chastised significantly for viewing anything other than land use. And this board was chastised significantly for viewing anything other than land use. Anything other than land use is what we were chastised numerous times to only consider land use.
And that's what this is, land.
Nothing else. We weren't to consider reputation. We weren't to consider previous, uh, business practices. We weren't to consider the actual application because in that application, there was actually several pages referred to the TransCanada Pipeline, which obviously was on part of that Wind Energy Project.
That was an attachment that was not the.
It was just cut and pasted in there. So, um, yeah, this could drag out a long time. So both sides could fully flesh out everything. But we're tasked with the task of, is it a, is it a good use of the land? Period. Is that not correct, Tim?
Have to consider everything that is in the, the, uh, again, you have the.
I'll let Betsy talk about this.
You have, you have the review criteria, review criteria that you have to make all your, base all your decisions on, on the review criteria. Which you have to make your, your recommendations based upon those. That's all I can tell you.
Again, folks, it's very critical. The meeting should be in January. Your own published website said that. So, you know.
Is that law, Tim, or is that policy?
That's, that's just policy. That's just my policy. So I have time to review the application.
It's your published policy. It's what you're saying as a county you're going to go by.
Okay. Article twenty-one states that there is no implied right for any person on land to obtain a conditional use permit. And that you guys will consider on, on case by case basis, where conditions warrant an adequate safe part of the taken admit fee, any of the potential problems associated with said development. So Mr. Walker didn't come to me. My recollection of that conversation was a little bit different than his recollection of that conversation. My recollection, this is Betsy Edwards.
Twenty-three, ninety-four.
Yeah, that's it. Twenty-three, ninety-four, Bay Road. So, uh, I talked to him about water. We have a neighbor who has been quarried by and their water's been cloudy ever since they got quarried by.
Can you define quarry by how far away are they?
I don't know what their setback was, but I know that they have.
That would, that would be important for us to know. The setback, the length of time that it's been since that, did that happen? And did they have tests before it and during and after? That would be important data for us to consider.
Well, I could maybe get this to you by January. Um, but, uh, I had a concern for water. You know, uh, Mr. Walker said that he provided a water study. The water study is, uh, over thirty years old. Um, a lot of things have changed in thirty years. A lot of ways that we do science have changed in thirty years. Thirty years ago, uh, it was okay to, uh, drive around with your two-year-old in the back of your truck. Uh, and that was considered as, you know, okay, safe. There was no, no problem with that. You know, standards have changed, uh, and when we know better, we do better. So I did ask for a water study. Uh, Mr. Walker hasn't, uh, contacted me at all about providing a water study. I talked to him about a seismic study. We live in a really limestone house. I'm concerned about foundational uses, um, and how our foundation, uh, will deal with blasting. I asked him about what, uh, if he would take a bond out on my house, uh, until the end of the decade. Uh, and he, uh, definitely didn't, uh, you know, uh, offer to do that. I said, you know, what are we going to do if I end up with a house without a good well? We, um, had kind of, we're up pretty high and there's been, uh, well problems in our area. It's been kind of ongoing since we've looked at it. Um, I asked, you know, what are we going to do about that? Um, he gave no mitigation about if I don't have running water at my house, what we're supposed to do. Um, he told me that he didn't believe in screening and that, uh, I would just be looking at the dirt piles. So, I mean, I think that we just had, uh, kind of different, uh, I haven't, and anybody called me about a seismic study. I have, you know, he offered some of these things and I said, well, it'd be interesting to know. None of those things have taken place. Um. So Crest Ward property, more walkers don't have an active mining license. You have to have a mining license to operate a mine in the state of Kansas. So if you are in the business of mining or quarrying, you have to have a license. Uh, Mr. Walker hasn't had a license, uh, in over a decade. Um, I think his license lapsed, lapsed in twenty twelve. Um, there is not a reclamation plan, uh, for Kansas Falls Quarry. It's been by the state, which is part of the statutory guidelines for reclamation if you're going to move into an area. The only thing the state could provide me, um, and it'll be in your packet, was kind of an overview. It's at the very end, but, uh, it was filed on December fifth, twenty twenty-four. So that was after they'd already been quarrying. And, you know, uh, the state regulations and the state oversight only work if you keep up with your paperwork. And they only work if you follow all the guidelines and report. The state of Kansas, I might open rapid request. Uh, prior to that December fifth, hadn't had anything from the Kansas Falls Quarry that they could provide. Since twenty seventeen, uh, they also, you know, in their reclamation, there were no reclamation at the Kansas Falls Quarry on their own chart being reclaimed. There hasn't been any reclamation that's been reported since twenty eighteen. Yet they, you know, added new acreage according to the chart every year with, uh, no state oversight of the reclamation. Whether they've reclaimed it or not, the state hasn't been aware to actually look at. So at this point in time, uh, I'd have to agree that, you know, uh, a January meeting would probably be better to address all these issues. Cause he hasn't, he doesn't have a mining license. Uh, the application is by Crest Quarry Properties, uh, in the term of, and they're, they're operating a quarry without a license. If they're the ones operating it, then I don't know why they would make the application, uh, if they haven't had a license since twenty twelve. You guys have any questions?
My name is Fred Moody. I live in two-three-nine four Bay Road. I will start with some anecdotal evidence because I, you know, they just started working and I didn't really have the proper studies on water level. But six years ago, I replaced well pump. Probably fifteen years old at that point. And my water level was thirty-five feet. This fall, I pumped, which was six years old, went bad. And now my water level's at fifty-five feet. That's all I know anecdotally about it because they just started blasting and quarrying and doing all this stuff without telling anyone or doing approvals or just, um, so I didn't have, we didn't have time to do a proper water study. So I've already lost twenty feet ahead and, you know, my well's only eighty-five feet deep. So if I lose another twenty-five, twenty feet, you know, I'm in silt. I'm not making any water. I know it's not a big deal to them because, you know, they have millions of dollars of construction equipment and they're making ten dollars on the, ten, ten cents on the dollar for reselling stuff. You know, that's our house. That's where all our kids live. And it's a huge deal to not have water. I guess it isn't to other people, but it is us as a family. I'll go over some things that I have seen personally. Um, number one, the road use. Today, they drove directly onto the road. I saw them with my own eyes just today. Drive correctly onto the road. So they might say they're not, they might say they're going to do stuff, but they're just. They don't follow that rule if they say they're going to fall.
Excuse me. You should get that. If I ask you a question, does they drive on a road with a half ton pickup or with a not registered overburdened, uh, off-road, uh, truck?
It's one of their record trucks.
Eighty tons.
So if you're bigger than a half ton, they're right there. What's the use for?
Service, service truck, ser- service truck.
Yeah, it's probably a box in the back and a crank and a gasket. But, you know, it's still directly right on to, and number two, they claim that it's a township road. That is a county road. So you guys are responsible for maintaining that. That is, he says twenty cars a day. I would assume fifteen cars an hour on that road. If you haven't been out there, there's an insane amount of traffic.
It's the main road to Chapman. That's it from south. That's the, they go right by the main road to town.
Yeah.
Same route?
No.
It's speech though. It's probably.
Yeah. So where Poland is paved in Gary County and then it comes, that road goes there. So you get all sorts of traffic. Everyone east will strive on that road. So, you know, twenty a day is a little understated. That's, that's, that's just what I've seen in the, in the short amount of time. If I, if I knew they were going to start blasting as soon as I did, I would have measured how deep my well is. So I would have started working.
So we pulled a well today and just anecdotally with the, uh, with the drought. Um, the second one we pulled and we drilled, we drilled one, uh, this summer also. And all of our water tables are low, at least mine are. Two wells, two existing ones. We drilled a new one. And they were all, the new one, of course, you didn't have a benchmark, but it was lower than what the, uh, old one well drilling. He's eighty years old and has drilled thousands of wells and he knows, you know, the geology. All three of those wells are down and we created a drought. I'm saying it couldn't be blasting. So I'm just saying anecdotally, like, it's kind of some weird experience.
And then one more thing, I, I know it's been a long meeting, but the difference between artillery or MLRS shell or whatever going off Fort Riley, going off, hitting the ground, exploding above the ground versus when you take that explosive charge, put it in the ground, and then you explode it, it's going to, you know, you may not hear it as much, but it's going to affect the ground. We don't have a real opus. We have, you know, water and sand. So when they're shaking all that up, that's what's going to get everything all salty and making these grounds a little harder.
If you mind, I'd like to ask you some accusations. First of all, the application was referred to me by Mr. Hamilton to be due on the twenty-second. And that's when I brought it in on the twenty-second. My, my CUP that you have, the email in there has no expiration date. It doesn't say temporary. It says I will not need any other CUP. We started quarrying that farm at three quarters of a, of a section in nineteen seventy, between seventy-three and seventy-five, before there were any zoning regulations. And to me, that area would be grandfathered because it wasn't covered by the CUPs at that time. There's, there's two things that have to happen tonight. One of them is we need to get this stop work order released. We have highway projects that have to be bid December, January, February. And if we don't have a source to bid those projects, then we can't bid them. And that just eliminates some, uh, possible work. I looked, I looked it up in the last three months. We averaged nine to twelve thousand dollars a day in sales of concrete rock. That was prior to this shutdown. And if we, if we get eliminated from being in the quarry, I'm coming after the county at nine to twelve thousand dollars a day. Firestone is my agent. They are the quarrying agent. They're the ones that have the permit to quarry this property. They are my agent. They're, they, I have a contractor. If, if you're, if you consider changing the next hearing to January, uh, we would have to have the, the, uh, stop work order released. Otherwise we can't operate.
I would have to, uh, refer to, I'd have to do some, uh, talking to administration on that. And see, uh, uh, all I can tell you is in the past, what we've done is people who have proceeded with doing what they were doing without the CUP being granted. They do that at their own risk of it being denied. And, uh, like I said, that's, again, like I say, it's, it's a risk that you take. And what I'll do is I'll research and see what, what we can do. But as far as I'm concerned, are you able to get rock from the, the, where you have already quarried on the northwest quarter?
Not, not the quality that we need for state concrete rock. And federal, I mean, we're talking jobs that we have to do at Fort Riley. I, I'm not trying to say this is a national security issue, but we do have to furnish concrete for the contractors at Fort Riley.
Right. And, and I gotta say, I don't have, uh, I can't lift that. I'm going to have to defer to, uh, I'll talk to, uh, county council.
The reason I came in to see you in two thousand twenty was because we were about wrapped up in Gary County. And I wanted to be sure that Martin Marietta or somebody else had changed, uh, the format on that property. And when you gave me the CUP authority, it, it has no, it has no limitation.
For that northwest quarter. The, the southwest quarter is the.
Since section one.
Yeah, section one, northwest quarter.
So I'm.
This is for the southwest quarter that you're wanting to get south of that.
We can't get this, this, uh, stop work order released and get back to quarrying. If you want to, if you want to continue on and get more information, that's fine. But, but we're at a critical point in, in our production, in our, in the business. And if we can't get that done, I'm going to pull the application because I already have a CUP permit. Sent an email. I'm already grandfathered. And the only reason I'm here is because Mr. Hamilton convinced me that, that it would be better if I went in and get a, get a CUP, uh, just to keep everything. This was after Ms. Edwards complained to him. So anyways, uh, that's where I am. And then we'll see how you vote. And, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm convinced and my attorney is convinced that, that we don't really need any more, any more application, any more CUPs because we already have it. And we will abide by state law and, and it'll be over.
Again, applicant, if they're, you know, they can proceed and doing whatever they want to do. Any applicant can, but they do that as a risk of being denied. And so that's the only thing. So, you know, it's a fifty-fifty shot. But I will investigate that and see what options are available.
Applicants like to say that I understand Mr. Walker has a contract he likes to fulfill. And I, I hope he understands that nobody is entitled to a conditional use permit. I mean, the county comprehensive plan is clear that ag is for ag. And that's why you have to go through this permit process to get something different than ag. Because the general character is supposed to be ag on a single-family residential. And so while he, he is very concerned with his contract, I'm really concerned with my house, where we live with our five kids and having water. And I haven't gotten any assurance that he's gonna do anything to help us with our water. And frankly, he's just been a big bully. And, you know, I think showing up at my office while I'm at work, and I told him he could come over, but you notice he didn't wanna talk to our family, he didn't wanna talk to me and my husband. He just wanted to come and, you know, talk to me about how I was worried about nothing. And I, I do think I'm worried about something, because I do know people who have cloudy water. We are in drought, and we're still gonna have to pay the note on that mortgage whether we can live there or not. And, you know, this is a ten-year project. I said, my, my youngest is gonna be in college by the time he's done. You know, she's seven years old. And this is gonna be across from her, you know, house, front yard the whole time. And so, you know, there's been no real attempt at mitigation of, you know, what, you know, the landowner is getting a, a financial incentive for this. You know, the landowner has a financial, and, you know, they, they can choose to do that and get a financial incentive. This is happening right next to me and can affect our whole lives, and we get no assurance. And I just don't think that's too much to ask for.
Dan, I don't know about you guys. I, I do feel like there's just too much gray area with this industry right now and what has happened with the past. And I'm not a fan of changing zoning regulations or updating stuff as we have tried to attempt to possibly approve something. As you set a precedent for doing that for every CUP. So that, my suggestion is to have, you know, staff figure something out in regards to the application and the stop work order. Just an idea, we don't want anybody getting in trouble, but there's too many gray areas here right now.
Well, what I would, you have the option of tabling it or continuing it until next month also. Give you a chance to, we're looking at the, you know, since you're gonna have to make a motion on something.
I, I think I heard from, from Mr. Walker, D-Day H R is January. We don't have that thing lifted by January, we can't bid.
No, I think he wants it now.
Oh, you want it right now?
Yeah, we have to get it now. We have to be able to bid work that, that happens, you know, now, the bidding is now, the work is next summer.
I just would, I would just state for, that I'm not a fan of, just how everything is going down tonight. But just, we need to know what it needs to be with this industry in the future and for our zoning regulations. Because this is not, it's not black and white, it needs to be figured out.
I totally, I would be happy to continue this process if you lift the work order.
I'm not talking about you right now, I'm just saying the industry overall, I'm talking to staff about that. Just overall, we need to figure out something so this does not happen in the future.
Well, and this has been, I'm telling you now, I said it's, it's isn't new.
Right.
This is stuff that has been going on historically, not just in Dickinson County, but in a lot of counties, where quarries come into play. Because there's a lot of, you know, the way the industry works, a lot of times the, the zoning regulations will try to, you know, preserve the areas, which rightfully they should. But it's, because it is considered a primary industry, I think a lot of times it goes over people's heads and they, they don't. A lot of times, the things that you, you have to address on that through your conditional use permit, maybe staff changes, maybe there's changes in different things. Like, like I said, there are things that go on in a, in a county this size that I'm not aware of that require a CUP. And that's why I'm saying this is, it, it is particular case. So what I would, what I will, what I would recommend doing is for you all, you can continue it to the next public hearing. And I will investigate with Adam and see what authority and county council, see what authority I have. All I can tell you is, people, people who do CUPs and they, they do their work, you know, while the CUP is going on, they take a risk that it's going to be denied. But I know this is an industry and I understand that. Let me do some, you know, if you continue it, I can, I can investigate and I'll have an answer for, for Mr. Walker hopefully tomorrow.
But we learned in the fall, we cannot change any of our rules and regulations once an application has been accepted. We learned that last fall, or, you know, a few months ago. We can't change anything once an application's been accepted, we can't change anything as long as we're instructed.
Well, I don't think there was much in our, in our recommendations or whatnot that, that it would pass was crazy. I mean, that.
Well, there, there are, there are some things in, in staff recommendations that we would not want to impose. Example, the hundred, hundred-foot setback. That's just, like I said, you can vary them. You can say, I think I'm gonna, you know, recommend that you that not be acknowledged. But it's, if you want to continue, since the public hearing is still open, you can continue the public hearing in January. I can look into what Mr., see if Mr. Walker can have that, you know, of him, and I'll see what I, what, what options are available to that. But I'm not, you know, right now, I said, if he's still able to get rock, I mean, I'm not, you know, he, he runs the risk. If he goes any further into that southwest corner, then it's, it's like with any conditional use permit. It's, they run the risk of being denied and if they, you know, and it's a fifty-fifty shot. So, I mean, he can, he wants to do it, he can do it, but he's running the risk of, you know.
Mr. Chairman, in question, sorry to interrupt. The issue we referred to the last cup, a couple of months ago, the meetings, public hearings were week apart. Is there any recent, this is being promoted, you know, a month versus, it just doesn't seem like both applicants are being treated fairly. But the prior applicant only happened to wait seven days for this continuation, have you any?
Well, it's because in this particular case, that's Christmas.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It's gonna be, it's, it's, if we go, well, it's, it's not, I, I would have to, that's, that's up to a board. If the board wants to do that, that's fine. But I just, that's up to them. If they wanna continue it next week, typically we continue it to the, the following month because we've got two meetings in a row then. One in January and the one, uh, you do it for next week, it's up to you guys.
I think the real issue here is, Mr. Walker, I gotta get the stop work order lifted now.
And that's what I'm going to see.
This board doesn't have the authority to do that, so you're gonna have to.
I'm gonna investigate that, that's what I'm doing.
The only option we have is to, is to pass it. That's the other option we have, and we can set the, we can set the conditions.
Right.
So I, I would make a motion, Mr. President, that we approve CPU twenty-four dash oh-nine with the conditions that the matrix of Kansas aggregate regulations, that those be followed by the applicants. And then going through staff recommendations, I'm gonna go through these one at a time, so, so they take notes. Applicant must not cease all operations. Applicant must provide screening on residents adjacent to the property if the adjacent landowner requests. Operator.
James, I'm sorry, what was the first one? Must not cease all operating.
Somebody's supposed to take notes.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Applicant does not have to cease all operations. Applicant must provide screening for adjacent residences if requested. Applicant must provide, um, help me out here, um, help me out. Uh, geological, what'd you say? Uh, geological testing.
Seismologist.
Seismologist and water. Hydrologist and water well testing, is that correct? Must provide that, um, I'm gonna say within thirty days.
And what, what is it, this and stand, stand, are you just a conditional use, you got it lifted?
Nothing has been done there yet that would impact that.
Well, he's already said, he's gotta get back to work. Come on.
He's in another position.
So we dealt with, we dealt with this last fall with dozens and dozens and dozens of individuals. I feel for you, I understand, but that's not how the world works. There is business, there is impact, you try to minimize it and you do the best you can. And, and I'm, I'm just gonna say with fifty years, sixty years' experience, they've done a good job at that. And so we're gonna put some conditions in to try to help that. The screening, the water testing, the hy- seismologist testing. Third party.
Damage just to the, the evaluation of the property if you don't have water?
No.
We're gonna have, you're gonna provide that protection?
No, I'm not, I'm not going there. Somebody else can add that in if they want to. The, the reclamation plan, um, need to get a reclamation, well, the reclamation, reclamation plan is covered under all of these, correct Dave? All of these matrix, the reclamation plan is there. On item B, licensing is covered in there, so we don't have anything there. Dust abatement plan, uh, project within a quarter mile of any residential structure. I would keep that, I would keep that conditions. Current proof of compliance with KDHE, that's covered, that's covered under the matrix. So item, item D is, it does, it does not apply, it's covered under the matrix. Because KDHE is a state of Kansas, what's listed there is part one of the list. Item E. Yeah, that's covered, uh, that, that site plan, um, the site plan, is it not in here? Dave, is it not in here, the site plan? I'm gonna say within thirty days, get a site plan to, to ten.
There's a, a map in there showing the farm.
Yeah.
Whole site.
But it, it doesn't show the, it doesn't show how deep you're going and the, and how the concrete work are gonna.
But they're not, they're not gonna know that until they start going, you can't, you can't define that in a rock quarry. So, um, item E, the site plan, um, is, needs to be provided and the USGS quarter of the map is acceptable. A bond in the amount acceptable to the county, what were we gonna do with that? We're not gonna leave it open-ended.
We're gonna say, uh, in a, in an amount acceptable to the county engineer.
Dave?
It's covered under the state. There's a, oh, and the department, there's a, there's a department that handles reclamation.
Okay, so we're gonna say F, the bond in amount acceptable to county engineer implies the state regulations.
Okay. Repeat that, James, sorry.
Item F, the bond in amount acceptable to the county engineer and state for reclamation. We're gonna strike item two.
All of it.
All of it. Uh, item three, we've already covered, we've talked about neighboring properties, adjacent properties periodically, well testing, we've already covered that.
So the three is gone?
Three was covered earlier, you can either, you can submit the language we, we determined, or you can, uh, or you can just cover it when we went through the other items, A, B, C, D. Of course, you, item four, we're gonna strike that, of course, you can use overburden to construct firms if you want to. You can also use roundtable, main thing, provide screen for the adjacent properties.
What are you striking for?
Strike four. Uh, con- conforming with all provisions required for quarries outlined in Article twenty-one, item fifty, are those not state regulations? Get referenced them. Some of them do. This is just, uh, see, this is due to, that item B there talks about dust engagement within a quarter mile. We're gonna, we're gonna strike item five because it's a duplicate, it's repetitive, and it's all covered in the state regulations. If public rightways be utilized, applicant must enter into a maintenance agreement with either county or the township, that stays as written.
Okay, let me read back these, make sure I'm getting them right. Whoever can take notes, because I've been taking notes, I wanna make sure I get them right.
Oh.
Thank you. Are you still on the window as much?
No, I'm, I'm done, that gets to the end of the condition.
They're trying to.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we pretty much talked about it. We didn't close the public. Okay, yeah, so have it if anybody else has. Is there anybody else that has any public?
I do.
Because, don't roll your eyes, somebody else is standing there.
Just, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to speak from buyer's perspective. We are my operator and we give my license for this location. First of all, when the county sent out the letter to cease and desist, they called us right away and we stopped. So we shut down everything. And then we didn't start back up until we had approval to do, to move dirt. And so that's when the reclamation started back up. So just for the record, uh, we are, we are following the rules. I think, I think one thing should be noted is that there's people's livelihoods at stake here. We do have a dozen to twenty employees at times that are out there. And this is what some of these guys have been doing all their life. I just don't wanna lose sight of that. Yeah, we had the service truck, we had tagged vehicles on the road. But the large haul trucks, the loaders, all that stuff can't get out there. The, the whole property is fenced, there's gates, they're closed, and they're not out on the roads at all. Lastly, I wanted to, well, second to last is just an item of note is that our crushing operation is two miles away. And typically, that's what the screening is for, is to block an asphalt plant or a ready mix plant or a crushing plant. This is way over the hill and down by the river, that's where this is at. I wanted to give you, I only have four copies, but you guys can share them. This is a report that was done by a gentleman a couple of years ago, and it was for the Kansas Aggregate Producers Association. And what it is, is it's a thirty-year period of quarries in eastern Kansas, which, if you know the geology, the quarries in Kansas are all east of here. Kansas Falls is one very furthest west that has any decent rock in. This shows almost five hundred homes that have been built near a quarry in the last thirty years. And so this maps it out, shows you some pictures of the homes. And I think it might be useful, um, as you guys are considering this, one of those needs to go to the champ, that's a good list. I'm giving you that as an item consideration, that these are all homes that have been built and, and established near rock quarries. And this is a very thin ledge that we're mining. And again, we're, we're two miles away, our crushing operation is two miles away from, from our mining that. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Tim, you were gonna read back to me my motion.
Let me, let me close public real quick. Nobody else from public, right? Okay, public, uh, speaking is formally closed. Okay.
Okay, applicant may continue all operations. Under A, updated reclamation plan, uh, did we agree to that? I think it's a member, the reclamation plan.
The reclamation plan that's in here, um, and is on file with the state agencies is, that's required by them. So that's covered in this matrix of twenty-some agencies that they have to work with. That was item A, in matrix of agencies.
Well, impact study update.
Uh, are you, item B, we're past that, so we're on item C. That's the big, item C, state as is.
Current proof of compliance.
We're striking out item D because that, that is part of what they do, that's covered in this matrix. K D H E is the very first one listed under Kansas.
Scratch.
D is scratch.
E, item B, we are gonna use the G, the USGS map that he's included as the site plan. Item F, bond acceptable to the county engineer and.
Compliance with the state.
Compliance with state. We're striking item two.
Said I could keep three, but that's redundant after I.
It, it is.
Okay.
But if you want it in there, you can, you can do that. And then you also need to add the geological study to item three if you wanna keep that as a standalone item. And then four. Item four can stay or go, I don't care, he can use overburden for screening if he wants to. My guess is he could say bells or something.
And five is struck.
Strike five, that's redundant.
Six is fine. Okay, okay.
So that's my motion. And this will, uh, as with all the cases this evening, uh, this will go to the county commission on the tenth. I think we're waiting on the second and, oh, I'm sorry. All second.
It's been noted second to approve C P twenty-four dash zero nine. With the recommendations of approval of under following conditions that are in our application plus the ones that have been amended to what the staff would prefer. Uh, all with favor for this, please raise your hand. I'll post any sign.
Tim.
Oh. So motion did not pass. Not a motion.
Motion is made to continue the meeting with staff also looking into council and issues and whatnot with set application.
Correct.
Would that be applicable?
Well, to find out if you can continue operations.
Correct. Yes.
And, you know, and, and that's, uh, yeah, we can do that. And if that's the case, then we're going to, if it's, if we wanna continue it to next week or if we wanna continue it then soon.
Next meeting, wind energy was a whole nother ballgame, this isn't, you didn't realize it was gonna be like this, but.
You had three hundred people.
That was, oh yeah, three hundred people in a room, that's a little different. Who knows?
So, but I, I will definitely let Mr. Walker know something tomorrow, uh, for sure.
Okay, well, so I will make the motion then to continue this discussion in this meeting with this application. This is C U P two-four dash zero nine for the January meeting while at the same time staff looks into the stop work order.
And this will also give you enough time to look over material.
Lot of motion, but I have not any right now.
Just a comment, having acquaintances that are engineers, worked with K-Daw, worked with other folks in construction. Just anecdotally, Dave is not blowing smoke that a lot of those contracts are being lent this winter for work next summer. I mean, that is how that business works.
I think we all understand that means.
I wouldn't segment you out, I'm just saying that anecdotally, that is, that is the facts.
I just don't think we need to rush it anything.
So, there was no second, so motion was not made.
Your motion's.
Curved up.
Well.
The denial is not a.
The denial, uh, uh, for, that's next. I said you can either approve it, you know, approve table, approve with additional condition or deny.
Just a question, was there any of the conditions that were put on or were not put on initial motion that board members had a discussion with? Is there anything that you heard or didn't hear that you're like, I know this, this is a miss?
I completely, I, I will admit that I like what I saw, but from, and I'm going back to the wind farm on this. There's a lot of stuff that we got that I feel like we weren't able to really dive into very much. I'm saying we don't have a lot of info here, but I don't wanna make the wrong decisions. And affect other people, and, but also I don't wanna hurt them either, I want them to keep going. Because I, I work for a business too, I know and I might own that business someday. I would not want to put somebody out of their business.
Right.
But I don't want to affect other people at the same time and maybe hurt their livelihoods either. So I, I wanna I don't know like the way to put it, because I don't wanna sound one sided on this, because I want what's best for everybody here. But um, I just feel like there's some, some things that are interesting and the fact that there's some like with the land use with the reclamation, I, I get that that was in our, our packet and I appreciate that. But it was just some lines with a pendrum. I'm not, I'm not trying to say you gotta have this fancy board telling me all this, but that's, there's just some things that could have been maybe a little bit more professionally done, in my opinion, that I didn't like seeing. But that's just my opinion. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself and why I wrote it that way.
Does the guys, anything was missing or should have been there that wasn't?